We'll call the Wilmer City Council Meeting for Monday, October 1st to order roll call.
Mayor Calvin?
Here.
Councilmember Nelson?
Here.
Christensen?
Here.
Schwantes?
Here.
Alvarado?
Here.
Osmus?
Here.
Meske?
Here.
Plowman?
Here.
Fagerly?
Here.
Nine present, zero absent.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any proposed additions or deletions to the agenda? I have one addition, and that is a tax increment financing housing project that will be presented by our Planning and Development Director, Mr. Peterson, in item number fourteen, to remove that from the agenda. With those two items, council, anything else? I'll entertain a motion for the revised agenda.
So moved. Second.
Motion made and seconded to revise the agenda and approve it. Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who oppose, same sign. That motion carries. Next is consent items. Ms. Thompson?
On tonight's consent agenda, we have for council approval, the city council meeting minutes of September 17th, Wilmer Municipal Utility Board minutes of September 24th, Planning Commission minutes of September 19th, an application for exempt permit for glacial ridge curling, a resolution to acknowledge donation from Wilmer Lakes Rotary in the amount of $1,000 for sponsoring the summer movie in the park, a resolution to accept and acknowledge donation from Wilmer Noon Lions for Dog Park Equipment valued at approximately $1,800, a resolution to consider appointment of judges for 2018 general election, Civic Center Arena Special Event On Sale Liquor License for the Warhawks, consideration of retaining 1988 Laverne Fire Engine, and for council's acceptance, Human Rights Commission minutes of August 21st, Wilmer Community Center Board minutes of June 13th, Wilmer Community Center Board minutes of August 22nd, the Central Community Transit Operation Board minutes of August 28th, and the accounts payable from September 13th through September 26, 2018.
Motion to approve.
Motion made and seconded to approve consent items. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
Christensen?
Aye.
Schwantes?
Aye.
Alvarado?
Aye.
Osmus?
Aye.
Meske?
Aye.
Plowman?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That motion passes. Next, we have City Council Open Forum. No one has signed up for that, so we'll go to tax increment financing housing project. Mr. Peterson.
Mayor Calvin, members of the council, at the work session tonight, you heard the presentation for a proposed 288-unit housing project consisting of 472-unit buildings, proposed by Samuel Herzog of Fergus Falls, to construct one building per year for four years. Part of that request was that the city council consider the use of tax increment financing to assist in the financing of that project. It was a recommendation of staff that the council move to set a public hearing on a tax increment financing plan for the December 3rd, 2018 meeting, and I would make that, offer that motion to the council.
So moved. Second.
Motion made and seconded to have a public hearing for a tax increment financing housing project for December 3rd. Discussion. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who oppose, same sign. That motion carries. Next, we have public hearing. First public hearing is an ordinance amending the city charter, section 4.03, Park and Leisure Services Board. Mr. Kevin Halliday, I'll open the public hearing.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. On behalf of the Charter Commission, we are here presenting an administrative ordinance amending the Park and Leisure Services Board section to the Park and Recreation Board. The Charter Commission has reviewed the membership and is recommending that there are seven members with two alternating out, and the city attorney, Mr. Scott, has provided language in there to accompany the odd person coming out every so often for three members. It is also administratively stricken that the leisure services are, throughout the ordinance, are replaced with the word recreation or recreation services. And we also struck out the drafting of the five-year plan at the request of the Planning Commission. It is clearly assigned as a task right here in this ordinance. It need not be a request of the Planning Commission. A five-year park plan must be developed by this board. Subsequent to taking public testimony, it is the Charter's commission recommendation that you approve the ordinance.
Okay. It's a public hearing. Anybody from the public that wishes to speak? CNN hearing done. I'll close the public hearing and bring it to the council table. Council?
Motion to approve. Second?
Motion made and seconded to approve the creation of the Park and Leisure Service?
Sorry, Recreation.
Park and Rec Board. Discussion. Now, this is a charter amendment. It takes eight affirmative votes by the council. The mayor is unable to vote on this issue, as a reminder to council. Roll call.
Councilmember Christensen?
Aye.
Schwantes?
Aye.
Alvarado?
Aye.
Osmus?
Aye.
Meske?
Aye.
Plowman?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
And that resolution passes. Kevin, thank you and your committee for the work that you've done. It's always a pleasure to see you back at the council. So you can certainly stay for the rest of the enjoyment, or if you want to spend the rest of your day, that's fine as well. And Bob and Carla, thank you for being here as well. We appreciate that. So with this action, Rob and I have been in conversation, and so, council, if you have people that you would like to serve on the park board, please get those names, either Rob, myself, or the city administrator, and we will get those names hopefully to you at the next council meeting. So with that, I'm sorry, we have to wait six... Robert, do we have to wait 60 days or 90 days?
Mr. Mayor, this ordinance takes effect, I believe it's 90 days after its adoption tonight.
Okay. So if you want to get those names to us, and we will bring those names so that at the 90 days, that that would then go into effect at that time for council to consider. Councilmember Nelson?
Just a clarification. This board existed in the charter already, so the amendment that we made tonight is simply taking it from six to seven. And there are people who were appointed to the Community and Rec Advisory Board that were fulfilling this, so could we not at least appoint six people at this point in time and wait for the seventh? For the change in this to take place?
Mayor, Councilmember Nelson, the council can make nominations to this board at any point. You have a Joint Powers Board, which is a separate entity, that has existing membership that is being terminated with this amendment. But I don't believe membership on the Joint Powers Board means that those people are automatically on this.
So when the people were appointed, this board was supposed to meet annually, and they were appointed kind of in a duel, was the way I understood it, that the people from the city that were appointed to the board were actually part of this park board that was required in the charter. And maybe that's not the correct interpretation, but that was the conversation, I think, with some of the people who were on that board, that they... With that, and so just seeking clarification on that.
No, my understanding is that, obviously, at one point, this board existed under charter. It was populated. It was nominated through the charter process to appoint members to charter boards. Then the city entered into a joint powers agreement with the school district and made appointments to the Joint Powers Board, and thereafter stopped making appointments to the charter Park and Leisure Services Board. So I believe now that you are essentially reverting to the charter board, you would need to fill that membership on that board through the charter nomination process, through the charter appointment process, I should say. So I think new nominations and new appointments need to be made.
Councilmember Meske?
I wouldn't disagree with that. I think, however, the recommendation was made, and I think that's what council, our councillor Nelson is referencing, is we were both on the Charter Commission at the time, that it would be wise, since the charter still had this board in there, that they at least meet and serve in that capacity. I am not sure. I would refer to other folks that were here longer if they ever had minutes from that board, if they ever actually officially met, and their minutes gone through this council.
It was done several years ago. I don't think it was done on a consistent basis, but I know that it was done while I served as an advisory, in advisory capacity to that board. But I just was thinking this was a way that we didn't have to wait for that length of time to make the appointments on the, you know, that we could at least do the sixth and wait for the seventh.
Well, I guess I would interpret it as those six serve until this board replaces them after the 90-day period.
Maybe I need to look into this and give you a formal opinion on it, since it sounds like there's references to minutes and understandings that I might not be aware of at this point. But I would say, just in response, that I think you have to understand these are two separate entities. The Joint Powers Board is one entity, the Charter Board is another. So certainly, appointments to the Joint Powers Board continue until that board is officially dissolved. Was it, sorry, has that taken effect?
September 1st. Mr. Halliday, do you have an opinion on this? You've been around for a long time.
Mr. Mayor, I just...
I didn't see your roll, by the way.
Thank you for that. I think the answer might lie in your resolution adopted on the first Monday after the first Tuesday after the last election, so somewhere around January 8 or 9, 2017, if your resolution listed Park and Leisure Services Board, then I suspect they're still on. You have to go back to that resolution.
Thank you. Ms. Thompson, can we look that up, please? And Mr. Holland, can you work with the city attorney for a legal opinion? Thank you. Next on the agenda is a public hearing for sale of city-owned residential lot. I'll open the public hearing. Mr. Peterson?
Mayor and council, the city has received and offered a purchase Lot 12, Block 5 Pleasantview, Third Edition, from Phyllis Kyle. The council introduced the ordinance at the last meeting, and since that time, Ms. Kyle has executed the purchase agreement as prepared by the city attorney. She would like to close in the very near future. Originally, she wanted to close this week. It'll either be this week or early next week. And if the council approves that sale, that is, the recommended motion of staff is that the council adopt the ordinance for the sale of the property, assign it a number, and publish it.
It's a public hearing. Is there anybody from the public that wishes to speak? CNN hearing done. I'll close the public hearing and bring it to the council table. Council?
Move to approve. Second.
Motion made and approved and seconded to approve the sale of city-owned residential property, assign it a number, and publish it. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Schwantes?
Aye.
Alvarado?
Aye.
Osmus?
Aye.
Meske?
Aye.
Plowman?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Christensen?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passed. Next is another public hearing. I'll open the public hearing for food truck ordinance and formal appeal procedure for business licenses or permits. Ms. Thompson?
Proposed ordinance was presented to council at the September 10th work session and introduced at the September 17th council meeting. Tonight, we're conducting the public hearing regarding the proposed food truck ordinance and formal appeal procedure for business licenses or permits. City Attorney Robert Scott pointed out to me, there's one change that we will need to make on the ordinance, and that is on page 5, item 22. It refers to license E, and that should be changed to permit D. So we will be making that change after this. And it's staff's recommendation to waive the fees for 2018. And upon approval, there are three recommended actions that need to be taken this evening. The first is to adopt the Food Truck Ordinance, Division 3, Article 3, Chapter 8, and Formal Appeal Procedure for Business Licenses or Permits, Division 3, Article 10, Chapter 8. The second would be to approve the summary publication of the ordinance due to the length and cost of publishing the entire ordinance. And the third is to approve waiving the fee for 2018.
It's a public hearing. Is anybody from the public that wishes to speak? CNN hearing done. I'll close the public hearing and bring it to the council table. Council?
I'll introduce the first resolution as stated by Judy.
Second.
Motion has been made to approve the Food Truck Ordinance, Division 3, Article 3, Chapter 8, and Formal Appeal Procedure for Business Licenses or Permits, Division 3, Article X, Chapter 8, with the amendment, I'm assuming, Councilmember Christensen?
Yes.
Discussion. Councilmember Meske?
Well, there's been a lot of people talking about how this is perhaps an overreach by city to reach into the pockets of our current vendors. My understanding, from what I've heard now and what I see here in the ordinance, all the, all of the activity that we've had with food trucks from up until this point, we would have probably collected absolutely nothing if this ordinance was in place. Is that correct?
Ms. Thompson?
I would say that's correct, because all the food trucks were under special event permits.
Exactly. And so, moving forward, this would not hamper anything that has happened with food trucks in this city, since we've had, this is for new folks that are coming in to set up, or, you know, are trying to shift their business to public streets and not part of events and/or sitting in front of private places and all that other stuff. So I want to assure people that this is actually, we would have taxed, nobody would have fallen under this jurisdiction. This is a proactive ordinance that, so far, we've actually collected no revenue and would not have had we had it in place. This is for new food truck business in the city of Wilmer, under certain circumstances.
That is correct.
Thank you.
Councilmember Meske, I think that with the revisions that the council made, that's correct. But the first draft in front of us, that would not have been true. But the way that the council revised it, that would be true.
Then I'm glad we revised it.
I think that's why we took the public input.
Absolutely.
Additional to the conversation? Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Alvarado?
Aye.
Osmus?
Aye.
Meske?
Aye.
Plowman?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Christensen?
Aye.
Schwantes?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes. The next is for approving the summary publication of an ordinance due to its length and cost of publishing the entire ordinance.
So moved. Second?
Motion made and seconded. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Osmus?
Aye.
Meske?
Aye.
Plowman?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Christensen?
Aye.
Schwantes?
Aye.
Alvarado?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes as well. The next and final on this item is a motion to waive the fees for 2018.
So moved. Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Meske?
Aye.
Plowman?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Christensen?
Aye.
Schwantes?
Aye.
Alvarado?
Aye.
Osmus?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes as well. Could someone adjust the agenda so that the public can see the agenda, please? Next is consideration of introduction of ordinance repealing coin-operated amusement devices. Ms. Thompson?
Annually, the city issues coin-operated amusement device licenses for establishments as required by Wilmer Municipal Code, Article 2, Section 8, licenses, permits, and business regulations. In 2017, the city issued 40 licenses at a fee of $15 each for a total of $600. Staff is recommending council introduce the ordinance repealing the coin-operated amusement device licensing effect of October 31st, 2018, and set a public hearing for October 15th.
So moved. Second?
Motion made and seconded. Discussion. Councilmember Alvarado?
What was the original intent of this? Was this for, like, a large area with a lot of pinball machines and that sort of thing, a gathering space? What do we know? Or is it, now it's, we're talking about maybe one machine here and one machine there and charging them $15? Is that what I'm understanding?
Yeah, my understanding that when Ms. Thompson originally presented this to us was that there used to be all the jute boxes and stuff like that.
Okay.
And the internet is popular anymore, so this would just remove all of those coin-operated amusement devices. So it's kind of, when we had the last one, we looked at.
Mm-hmm.
We asked staff to go back and review those, and I believe Councilmember Fagerly brought this one up and said we should address this one as well. So that's the reason for it.
Okay. Well, I was just, I was just trying to get an understanding as to, not that we have any large areas that have pinball machines or whatever, but I suppose when, if and when we had a business that might want to do that, we might want to address it then or something. I don't know.
Maybe there'd be another part of licensing too, Ms. Thompson? Are you thinking, like, if we had, like, somebody come in with 100 different pinball machines, would we license them as an amusement area then instead? Is that, or what were your thoughts on that?
That would fall under the current ordinance, the way it is. If we, you know, dissolve this one, I guess we'd have to set up a new one again, is my opinion. It wouldn't be covered under any of our other licenses.
The cell phones are the amusements today.
Sad, isn't it? Right. Additional discussion. All in, all in favor, is this a roll call or a... All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who oppose, same sign. That motion does carry. Next is consideration of an Artist on Main Street Grant Program. Mr. Peterson?
Mayor Calvin, members of the council, this Artist on Main Street program is something that Sarah Swedberg has been getting involved with as part of her taking over the Main Street program for the city of Wilmer. The request that we're going to have tonight is that staff be authorized to apply for and accept, if awarded, funding for the Artist on Main Street program through the Preservation Alliance. The Preservation Alliance has received a second round of funding through the Bush Foundation for an Artist on Main Street Grant Program. Three cities received this funding this year, and we are anticipating that Wilmer would be an applicant for 2019. Wilmer Main Street had to indicate local partners, key partners, to participate in the program, and the Wilmer Arts Council, the Barn Theater, and the Community Integration Center have all agreed to be supportive, supporting partners. If selected for the grant, Wilmer Main Street will follow the criteria and the designated timelines in administering the grant program. They have not identified the types of art yet. That is a second step or a future step in the process that proposals would be sought from local artists. And the, typically, a panel selects 10 to 15 projects, and these projects are implemented then in mid-2019. There's no local match required. All of the funding comes through the Bush Foundation by way of the Preservation Alliance. If approved, the city would receive $20,000 in year one, $10,000 in year two, and then assistance in year three. The Central Business District property owners and tenants have been supportive of this project, and it'd be the recommendation of staff that the council adopt a resolution authorizing staff to apply for and accept, if awarded, the funding for the Artist on Main Street program.
Move to approve. Second?
Motion made and seconded to approve the resolution authorizing staff to apply for and accept, if awarded, funding for the Artist on Main Street program. Discussion. Councilmember Meske?
This is exciting, and it's a really good way that we get back into the Main Street program. This is a great way to kick it off. This will be, will more than pay for our membership in that, and it, and I think it would be, I mean, there's already buzz in the artist community to talk about it, so I think this is going to generate some, from some neat, more, we'll just say, increased interest in downtown with a different slant, so I think it's pretty cool.
Okay. Roll call.
Councilmember Plowman?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Christensen?
Aye.
Schwantes?
Aye.
Alvarado?
Aye.
Osmus?
Aye.
Meske?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes. Next is consideration of sale of 2009 Ford Crown Victoria used squad car to the city of Painesville. Chief Feld?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Item before you is request authorization of the sale of a 2009 Ford Crown Victoria K-9 vehicle to the city of Painesville. A little bit of history on that is that this vehicle was authorized for replacement by the city council back in 2017. The new vehicle for the K-9 was put online, and this one was put in storage. In the meantime, we gained a second dog, so it was put back in use for a short period of time and is now also been replaced by a different vehicle. The city of Painesville is starting a K-9 unit, and with this vehicle, there were some extra costs that would have gone into effect for us to sell it, including pulling out all the K-9 equipment. And even when pulling it out, there were enough modifications done that would have limited its use for anyone. I looked at the price that historically these vehicles had gone for on the auctions, checked it against Kelley Blue Book, talked with the city of Painesville. The price of $1,500 was agreed upon as a reasonable sale price there, and the city of Painesville, their city council approved the purchase, signed the purchase agreement, and at this point, requesting authorization to sell that vehicle to them.
Council?
Motion to approve.
Second?
Motion made and seconded to approve the sale of a 2009 Ford Crown Victoria to the city of Painesville for a K-9 vehicle. Discussion. Roll call. I'm sorry. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Those who oppose, same sign. That motion carries. Thanks, Chief Feld. Next is consideration of timekeeping payroll system. Ms. Beckman?
Good evening. I have before you the consideration of the Kronos Timekeeping and Payroll System Resolution as a follow-up to my Kronos presentation on the September 17th work session. First off, I did get an answer to Councilmember Christensen's question regarding additional fees for upgrades and updates, and the answer is there are none. So the fees, or the cost is as presented. There's nothing additional. So with that question answered, it is the recommendation to approve the resolution to switch to Kronos in 2019 as our one system for recruiting, onboarding, timekeeping, payroll, tax filing, performance management, and scheduling.
So moved. Second?
Motion made and seconded to approve the purchase of the Kronos timekeeping system and management system for the city of Wilmer and implement its use in 2019. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Fagerly?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Christensen?
Aye.
Schwantes?
Aye.
Alvarado?
Aye.
Osmus?
Aye.
Meske?
Aye.
Plowman?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes. Thank you. Next, we have the consideration of Armory, Gordon, Fairgrounds Lift Stations, and their budgets and funding. Mr., I'm sorry, Finance Director Okens?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, before you tonight is the financing and final budget for the three lift stations, Armory, Gordon Avenue, and Fairgrounds. The Armory Lift Station is located at High Avenue right in the right-of-way. The Gordon Avenue Lift Station is located at the south side of Gordon Avenue, and the Fairgrounds Lift Station is located at 908 Park Avenue. In, in March of this year, the council introduced an ordinance, a resolution, setting a hearing that was held in April to finance the projects. There was a delay in the Fairgrounds Lift Station, which was initially a 2016 project. Public Facilities Authority did not get funding, and so that's why it is incorporated with the three projects in 2018. There's two actions before you tonight. The first one is a resolution approving the final budget for the three lift stations. There is $1,441,000 for the contract that was awarded to... Uh, there is $1,441,000 for the contract that was awarded to Lamenti &amp; Sons in April, uh, 10% contingency, and the professional services contract for Boll and Mink for a grand total project of $1,894,861. Uh, major portion of financing for that project is $1,558,505, which is the Public Facilities Authority loan document, which will be the second action being requested. Uh, uh, the second funding source is the capital reserve, which is required by, uh, PFA or the Public Facilities Authority, and the third is a, uh, use of some reserves in the cash to cover any contingencies if needed. So the first action, again, would be adopting the final resolution of $1,894,861.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve a resolution spending $1,894,861. Discussion. Mr. Okens, where does this come in, in, uh, relationship to the engineer's estimate?
I would have to defer that, Mr. Mayor, to our Public Works Director.
Do we know if this was higher or lower?
Mayor, members of the council, I believe this was within the 10% range that I like to shoot for, um, and I can't tell you which one was higher at this point, but I believe it was very close to the estimate.
For some reason, I thought it was about 2 million that you had, uh, put in the budget, but I, that's what I was wondering.
And, yeah, because we're, we're running about 700,000 per lift station, so I would, I would believe that without having those documents in front of me.
Thank you. Roll call.
Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Schwantes.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Mesky.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes. Next is a resolution accepting the offer to, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the second action would be a resolution accepting the offer, uh, of the Minnesota Public Facilities Authority to purchase $1,558,505 of general obligation sewer revenue notes. Uh, those notes would be 20-year notes. The interest rate that, uh, Public Facility Authority has, has placed on these notes is 1.119%.
So moved, Mr. Mayor. Second.
Motion made and seconded to, uh, approve a resolution accepting the offer to purchase the general obligation sewer revenue notes. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Christensen.
Aye.
Schwantes.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Mesky.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes as well. Next, city administrator comments.
Um, Mayor and council, I just want to make one brief announcement, a reminder that this Saturday, we're going to have our first fly-in out at the airport in over a decade, and I encourage people that, um, can come out Saturday, it'll be well worth your time. It's going to be from 10 o'clock to 3 o'clock. There'll be free hot dogs and chips from about 11 o'clock to 1 o'clock. There's going to be a car show also out there on the tarmac. Uh, we're going to have police and fire out there with some static displays. Also, life flight should be out there. And last, if, uh, there's good weather, we might have a synchronized flight. It won't be the Thunderbirds, uh, but it will be our own local pilots, and so I think everybody would enjoy that. And if you haven't been out to the airport, and you can, um, see the terminal, and also the beacon is not up yet, but it is on site, and you can see that, and it'll be up in the near future. So we're very excited about it. We're very excited about Oasis Arrow, who is sponsoring this along with our airport board. So very excited. I'll be out there, some of the council and the mayor will be out there, serving you a free hot dog. You can ask him for a free relish or something like that if you want, maybe he'll give it to you. So that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, the city administrator in his notes to the council today had, uh, mentioned the meeting that we had on the ma, for the mayor's bike ride for 2019, and so that'll be on May 17th. Rob, I think that's the right date, correct? Um, and it'll be in downtown Wilmer, and, uh, the park and recreation staff is working diligently to put together a great event, so mark your calendars for those of you that like riding bike for May 17th. Uh, it'll be a great event, um, and, uh, Rob and Britta have some fabulous ideas that I wholeheartedly support, along with the administrator, and so I'll get that on your calendar, uh, for the mayor's bike ride. Again, that rotates between the cities of New London, Spicer, and Wilmer, and then we have our honorary mayor who comes up as well from Marshall, and, uh, he attends that event as well, so, um, he will be there, and, uh, I would imagine there'll be a time for speeches and all that other good stuff, right, Rob? Okay, yeah, so limit them to an hour or less, correct? So anyhow, other than that, uh, a lot of great things happening in the Wilmer community. Um, this week, we have, tonight actually, going on right now is the New London Spicer League of Women Voters Forum for their school board. Tomorrow night, we have the sheriff's race for Candy White County, and so, uh, be in tune to when all of those forums are happening so that you're an educated voter. Uh, one of the things I want to make sure and remind people is that, uh, absentee voting is open right now. You can go ahead and vote for those, uh, who you'd like. Um, and in the past, you had to have a reason why you absentee voted. Now you don't, you just have to make a request. And so, uh, I would encourage, uh, your voters, if, uh, you're unsure if you're going to be in town, go ahead and vote early, um, and, uh, vote for the candidate of your choice. So with that, council member comments, and I'll start with council member Mesky.
Well, I didn't have much, but I'll just say, um, I, I'm thinking it's time, and perhaps we're waiting till after elections, but I think it's time for us to have a retreat again and maybe, uh, talk about some priorities. Um, I'm very anxious to continue to talk about perhaps some type of a policy review. It has been a very long time since we've done something like that, so just a reminder that maybe we can start planning on a retreat, hopefully, uh, shortly after the elections would be great.
Uh, the city administrator and I are meeting on that on Thursday, actually.
Good timing.
Yes, so thanks for reminding us of that. Councilmember Plowman.[1635.23]